Welcome. Today is March 27th and this is the Second Budget Workshop. First thing we need to do is move out of executive session. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
One, two, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Before we get started, let's all stand and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As I said, this is the Second Budget Workshop and tonight we're going to be discussing staffing, BOCES, benefits, revenue, and buses. And then after that, we'll have a board discussion, but we will have a chance to ask questions at each of the different sections of the agenda. So to start off tonight, Adele.
Okay. Thank you. So what I'd like to do is give you some context for this presentation. As we did in our first workshop when we were doing building budgets and department budgets, we kind of put it in the context of a scale as we've been doing the last couple of years in saying, what are the factors that were in our minds as we were developing this year's budget? And as you know, we're very intentional about building a budget that supports our students. So on one side of the scale, we have students, student program, always keeping that in the forefront of our mind. And then there's three sides that we really have to balance in order to present a budget to our community. The first side is expenditures. What programs are we going to fund? And then you look at the revenue side, what revenues do we have coming in to fund that budget to support the educational program for our students? In the last couple of years, we've had a really tough time with expenditures. And for three years running, we've been experiencing what's called a gap elimination penalty, which has shrunk our revenue pool. And it's due to the shortfall of the state budget. So the good news is that just yesterday, we got some state aid runs for this year and realized that the state is finally starting to address that gap elimination and in a small way, doing some restoration of that gap elimination. But in total, Webster's budget is still down $7 million in revenue from the inception of gap elimination. So that's been a factor as we've gone forward. So for expenditures, then, we've had to tighten the belt. And you've heard in the last three years, you've seen us use the zero-based budgeting process. We could not give incremental increases in the budget with that kind of reduction in revenue. So we went to a zero-based process, forensically looking at every expenditure, not giving anyone automatic increases, each department and building justifying every expense. And so you heard that in the last workshop. We continued zero-based this year, holding the line on those expenditures. For staffing, we did a complete review of staffing over the last several years and really had each program, each course section, kind of analyzed for efficiency. So in total, over the last three years, we've reduced about 60 full-time equivalent positions from the staffing over that period of time, which has really helped bring down the number for staffing and help us go forward in a more conservative fashion. We have also renegotiated all seven contracts in the district in order to reduce expenditures and to hold the line. We've reduced to both conservative, more conservative salary increments, and we've also reduced in terms of benefit package. So in that way, it's allowed us to move forward into next year with a more conservative package. So we've really had to make some tough decisions in order to get our budget under control and keep the students supported and keep our community supported with the most fiscally conservative budget that we can bring forward. So as you see the sources of expenditures, we thought it would be helpful for the community to see the percentages that make up the expenditures. So if you go to the next slide, and you can see that what the categories are of expenditures for the budget. Of course, we are a people business. We employ people to educate our students. Therefore, our salary and benefits are the biggest component of our budget. We do have some debt service as we go forward for our facilities and our buses. We have BOCES expenditures and those BOCES expenditures, many of them do drive revenue that we'll see when we talk about revenue. And then we have the other categories, which are all the support instructional services within the budget. And then in terms of revenue, how do we pay for things? If you look at that percentage of state aid, that's really what reduced and shrunk over the last three years. It was a higher percentage of our budget that was being funded by the state, but keep in mind, we're still experiencing a minimum of $7 million from the gap elimination of a shortfall of revenue. So that percentage you have seen drop over the years. We also raise money through property taxes. And then a new category, since we've been experiencing these difficulties, is the fund balance reserves being used as a revenue. So we are using fund balances and reserves again to make up for some of that shortfall. We're using, we're being very careful to try to build for the future as well and try to extend out the number of years we have to use those fund balance and reserves. And when Jim goes over those reserves, he'll be showing you with some of the measures that we've taken, that we're trying to extend our long-term sustainability. And then we have the other categories of the revenue that will be gone through this evening. So you can see how the percentages and categories of revenue to make up the budget. So tonight's job is to really talk about what's included in the staffing. Once again, we did a complete review. All building principals and instructional people had to go through every position, every staffing position. We audited that to make sure that we were doing this as efficiently as possible. And you will see some shifts and you'll see some positions that we've had in the budget. There's been some shifting that we're going to have Dr. Sheehan and Shelley Cahoon explain from instruction and from special ed. So I'll just turn it over to them to talk some of the specifics about our staffing budget.
So as you are aware, our instructional program is based around the work of the defores and being a professional learning community, which we've been nationally recognized for. So as we enter the instructional programs, we continue to ground our work in the essential four questions. What is it we want students to learn and why? How do we know if each student has learned it? How will we respond when students don't learn it and how will we extend and enrich learning? Not only these are the questions that we ask ourselves and our PLCs continue to ask themselves throughout the year in using student data, but this is exactly how we build our instructional budget to meet the goals that you have established during the summer process of goal setting. So what is it that we want students to learn? We are obviously in a position of transition through New York State. So both science, social studies, arts, and music will be experiencing new standards. So that is one of the key areas of focus as we move into next year, understanding and unpacking those key focuses. A focus that continues to move forward is the new standards in English and math, which is the common core. And the expectation of the state is that at each grade level, students will be benchmarked to ensure that they're college and career-ready at each grade level. And that's how the state assessments will be designed. One of an important emphasis for us in looking in research and using research-based methodology and understandings is that one of our focuses is to ensure that all students are reading by second grade. Through research, we understand that students who are able to accomplish this goal are much more likely to succeed throughout not only high school but college. That's a very important marker for us. And while we're focusing on this, we want to ensure that our students leave. When we look at that community piece, as we continue to define that as really fostering and supporting lifelong literacy and curiosity, as curiosity is that spark of learning that will continue throughout life. To support those shifts in the common core, one of the steps that the community and the board has taken is to envision and begin the process of having a full-day kindergarten program that will support our youngest learners entering school and meeting the new standards. Another piece of the puzzle is evaluating our special ed programs and ensuring that our students with special needs are receiving their primary instruction within the classroom and not outside the classroom. And we're doing that by moving to integrated teaching. What you'll see on the right is our cycle of continuous improvement. So we continue to make decisions based on this cycle, which appears simple, but is very powerful. We start with evidence. We interpret that evidence and then take action. We've been recognized by New York State for our practices in using student data to drive an achievement. As Adele and Jim have referenced, we also use the same cycle to ensure, and looking at our course offerings. So our evidence that we use when we're offering course offerings is what students are asking to take. And then we build around those student needs, going back to our first value, that students are first.
How will we respond when students are not learning? The Office of Instruction and the Office of Special Education are continuing to work together to identify through evidence, students requiring response to intervention services and supports. As John indicated, we are using that evidence to identify the needs and the research that really identifies those best practices. As we continue to support our students in the common core, we are realigning our resources based on our current data. As you will see, we are looking to increase literacy specialists at the elementary level. This will provide the focus to create and align a comprehensive literacy program at the elementary level where all students are able with that focus to read by the end of second grade. At the middle school level, we're shifting our resources based on our current data. This shift really provides an alignment to the common core by expanding response to intervention and by enhancing special education services, creating a collaborative teaching model. We're also recommending assistive technology specialists to integrate that technology across the curriculum so that students with disabilities can more easily access grade-level curriculum and express their content and their understanding. This will also provide them greater access to communicate what they know, understand, and are able to do.
Going to our fourth question. How will we extend and enrich learning? You can see the diagram on the bottom looks at a continuum after primary instruction, the choices we have. One of the ways we have done this is begin to implement reteach and enrich at the elementary levels. Our enriching specialists are key into helping support and develop the curriculum to meet the common core. At the middle level, we can see the extending and enriching through high school-level courses offered with middle school support, which dovetails and aligns to our increasing AP enrollment courses at the high school. So as we continue this, our goal also in using our resources is to ensure that we have a K-12-aligned coherent curriculum that provides a guaranteed viable curriculum to all students. To ensure this, we continue to honor our past commitments around class size. So what you'll see on the slide is our average class sizes for K through five. And in there, or in the numbers, you can see that we focus on ensuring that the K-1 through 2 program or 3 program have the lowest class enrollment numbers. And then 4, 5 are expanded. This is developmentally appropriate based on as students develop more skills to self-monitor and to engage in longer sustained periods of learning. That would be supported in the environment. If you look at the average class size, that just gives you a range of the class sizes that are currently within the system. So you may be at home saying, well, my child has a kindergarten class of 21 or 20 students. That could happen, but across seven buildings in a district, there may be a building that has balancing it out 17, but across when we do the average, the average is 20. And that's the average we look to maintain as we continue to go forward. One of the things, and Adele has spoken about this, that the district has continually to do not only this year but throughout, is continue to look at each of the positions and how it supports our students' learning and our goals that we've established for our students. Through that, we've continued to look at and find efficiencies to balance across and with our added focuses. The positions that we're suggesting are more shifts in focus as opposed to additions of positions, with the exception of full-day kindergarten, which does include the addition of positions. But again, through the balancing of the district's enrollment last year, that also provided us the ability to save positions for this year for the kindergarten. So the difficulties and the supports the family has provided, the community in shifting schools, has had a long-term benefit to all students in the district. So we just want to say thank you for going through that process.
As indicated earlier, we are looking to shift supports and services. When we look at the three areas of special education, the psychologist and the literacy specialist positions, it really is based on that, on BOCES reductions, which you will see later on in the presentation. The special education position is really going to be supporting that assistive technology specialist. We are looking to have, that it will most likely be in the area of special education that would be providing that support, that specialized support for our students. As we look to continue with response to intervention and supporting our special education students, providing additional social and emotional support for our students and really focusing on that parent engagement, how can we support our parents so that we can help them to maintain a positive, supportive, engaged student who is really focused on learning? And as we've indicated, the literacy specialist positions are really focused on creating that comprehensive elementary program.
So in summary, the board has detail in their packet of the numbers of positions in each category. And as we've said a few times here, pretty much it's flat staffing with the exception, with a couple of shifts from category to category, with the exception of the full-day kindergarten positions, which would be additions to the budget. And as Jim goes through, he'll give you more specifics.
And I think if you look at page 13A
Yes.
in your package, those numbers, the bottom line and the top, the bottom right-hand corner, the 13.2 new staff. We have 14 new kindergarten teachers coming in. So we're actually down overall staffing about .8 in all staffing, with the exception of kindergarten. And the individual detail for each of the elementary, middle school, and high school are in there. And I think as both Shelley and Dr. Sheehan said, a lot of the shifting that took place between the middle school, high school, so when we added stuff to the middle school, there were positions that came from the high school. So they weren't new positions coming into the budget. They were shifting of positions that were happening. And you'll see that on these sheets.
Yeah, I was just going to say, does anybody have any questions or comments about the staffing? Lisa?
I'm wondering, as we add this, or deploy different staff, and for example, with the literacy specialist and the math RTI, how long will it take us to see the impact? And how will we know if it had a positive impact?
Two parts to that answer. So I think one of the parts of it is that we have continuing ways to monitor our data sets. I think the realization of that is our understanding of what the state has been communicating to us, is the standards and the assessments that our students are going to experience are going to be much more rigorous and difficult. So I think that one of the challenges we'll face most immediately in instruction or for support of our students is that in the short term, we may need to be providing a little more support, because I believe there's probably some students right now that are doing okay, but when that bar raises, that we'll have to provide some additional support there. You know, I'd hate to say, here's an absolute date, but it would be a continuing monitoring progress of, you know, where are we and how are we benchmarking ourselves against that?
So maybe next summer, 2014, might be the time when we look at that data set to ask ourselves again or to remind ourselves.
Well, I just want to highlight the recursive cycle that we showed on the one slide of evidence interpretation action. And just want to make a point that we're doing that several times within the year.
Sure.
So that we're not waiting from one year to the next to say, is this program working? We do this cyclically in our elementary schools. We do this three to four times a year comprehensively with reading instruction and math instruction. We say, what's the evidence of student learning? What are the multiple measures? How are we interpreting that evidence and what actions can we take differently to intervene with these students? And we're doing that about every 10 weeks. Middle schools having the same kind of protocol at secondary. We're looking at passing failure data. And when we see a student that's starting to exhibit signs of disengagement, by maybe starting, you know, their failure rate is increasing, maybe they're failing one course slightly in first quarter, second quarter. We see them starting to fail two or three courses, we're immediately saying, what can we do differently to help this child? So we really are doing that recursive cycle of evidence interpretation action several times a year at both levels. And we try to highlight some of that in the board reports from the departments. You hear that in the stories of what they say that they're doing, that they looked at data and they made some changes in order to meet their students' needs. But I think as we go programmatically in the budget process, then we ask the bigger, broader question. What programs do we need then?
Sure, sure. And that's awesome. I mean, in terms of, it just seems, in terms of a budget ask, and I know it's an offset, it just seems like maybe there's a time to come back and just give us a bird's eye view of
Sure.
how it worked. And I don't know if that's like a next, you know, I know it's not
I think it's a very good, and I think one thing that Shelley and I have discussed and Shelley's been really working on is, one of the reasons that we're focusing on bringing students back from BOCES is because we believe our tier-one instruction is that strong, that students who traditionally haven't experienced it, that tier-one, that we've sent them outside of the district are now returning to the district. So some of that also is, we're also changing in ways to incorporate more students and include more students. So there's lots of variables that are happening at the same moment. So to parse that out and say, this is exactly, we could be growing in different ways and different segments. And I think it's a good question to look at the data when we're in the summer to say, how can you show that growth that's different than maybe in the past?
Tier-one, what does that mean?
Tier-one is referred to as the first instruction. So when we look at first instruction in the classroom, we'd anticipate, you know, for a guaranteed viable curriculum, 75% to 80% of students would be able to master that curriculum without receiving additional support would be the goal.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions? No? All set? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Moving on to the BOCES part of the budget. Jim and Shelley.
So as we look at our BOCES programs and services, our BOCES does reflect a decrease. I think it's noted that, you know, as we continue with our commitment to educate our students within their home community, our BOCES budget does, you know, reflect that overall decrease in special education tuitions. It also reflects a decrease in the total number of students attending BOCES program as several of our students are advancing to adult programs. As you'll see in the numbers, they do reflect a significant decrease over time for our students who, from '08-'09, participated in BOCES classrooms was 101. And we're projecting next year that it will be around 48 students. And I think that you have witnessed, you know, at recent Board of Education celebrations, how all of our students have really benefited from our inclusive approach to educating our Webster students.
I do want to make a point that I appreciate the special ed department always keeping in mind that while many of the students can be educated here, we have a full continuum of services. So there are some students that we are realizing need other support and we will look for that support and really individualize and customize the services for the students that we have here. But I do, I'm very happy to see that many of our students are being educated on-site and it is delightful to see them included, living in the community, strong with their peer group. And more and more, the connections between students is really wonderful to see growing. Very positive part of our school community.
Thank you. Jim?
I was just going to say, you'll see on page 15A and through, I think G, are all of the BOCES services that we request from BOCES and the cost comparison between 1213 and 1314. And yes, as both Shelley and Adele have said, just in total numbers, the special ed area in BOCES is down almost $500,000 this year, which is reflected in those numbers of students who are going through those programs. There are some other increases along the way in some of the other areas. A lot of them have to do with technology and our ability to support the APPR that has really, I could read it on your mind, Mike, really driven some expenses up because we needed so much software to be able to monitor this and do that. And those are reflected in the budget as well.
Okay. Does the board have any questions regarding the BOCES budget? All set? All right. Great. Thank you, Jim and Shelley.
Dedication, Mike.
Yep. You read my mind.
Thanks.
Do you have kind?
Moving on to benefits now, Jim.
There is an art to it.
As you know, benefits is one of the largest areas in the budget. In total, this year's benefit lines, which are just over, were just over $34 million, will be $38.05, an increase of $3.7 million. And a large part of that really comes from the mandated retirement costs that are being passed on to school districts. As you see in the first example, the New York State Employees Retirement System, the total budget for next year will be $3.1 million. The rate on salaries for non-certified staff will be going up to 20.9%, up from 18.9%. That increase in that budget is about $361,000. We also offset that line by revenues on our revenue line. And when we talk about revenues, you'll see that as a transfer from our ERS, our Employee Retirement Reserve, to the tune of $1.005 million. Teachers Retirement System, the budget for next year will be just over $9.5 million. The rate for teachers' retirement next year will be 16.25%. The current rate is 11.84. So it's just over 4.2% increase on the majority of our salaries, which is about $55,000, $56 million in this area. So that increase is $2,575,000 from last year. Unfortunately, this retirement area, we cannot use a reserve for it as the legislature has never approved the teachers' retirement system to be part of the reserve that can be, that the employees' retirement reserve can be used for, to offset some of those costs. And we lobby every year, hoping that they will make that change to add the word "teachers" in there so that we would be able to use a reserve when we have large increases like that to help offset them. But it hasn't happened yet. If you look at the area of Social Security, the cost for Social Security is projected at 7.65%, and that number is holding flat this year at $5,650,000. Our workers' compensation, total budget for 1314 will be $790,000. It's an increase of about, I have it, I just didn't change it. Thank you. It's an increase of $139,000. And we are in a consortium and we're more or less self-insured on our workers' comp. We had a couple of large claimants that have been with us for the last year, year and a half. It's rated on a five-year period. So this is one area that is increasing. Probably two years ago, we saw some steep decreases. And now we're going back up. One of the things that the consortium has had conversations about is how do we begin thinking about stabilizing these numbers for all districts so that we don't have that bell curve change? And we'll be working on that over the next year. Next area is life insurance, the $40,000 budget, and it's unchanged for 1314. Our unemployment insurance, the budget for next year is $165,000. It's down from $300,000. So it's a decrease of $135,000. This is the one reserve that's fully funded from the unemployment reserve on the revenue side. So in the past year, we had a $300,000 budget. We had a $300,000 revenue line. And the only amount of revenue that we could bring in from the reserve is what we actually spend from the budget. And we've seen that this number has gone down over the last two years. So it's been dropped to $165,000, which is around where we believe we'll end up with unemployment over the next year. And the last area is health, dental, and other insurances, $19,195. These lines make up health, dental, our HRA plans. The increase in this line is $755,000. It's due to increases in health insurance plans. This year, the consortium plans went up 11%. There was no rate increase for dental. The reason why the $19 million or something less than $19 million isn't going up 11%, it's only going up the $755,000 is because of really line two and three. And line two is around all of our bargaining units as we've been negotiating. We've been changing our plans from blue point two select to blue point two value. There is a lesser cost in value. So the cost to the district is less than it has been in the past. Also, and Also, a, and a lot of our employees, new employees coming in are paying more for their insurance. Currently, everyone pays, most of them pay ten percent of their health insurance, the district's responsible for ninety, but all of our new employees coming in are paying twenty percent of their health insurance, where the district will only be responsible for eighty, and their lower cost plans, because now everyone will be in blue point two value. So those savings helped offset this budget line going up a full eleven percent. On page nineteen A, you have a listing of all of the benefit lines for your review, and I'll stop there if there's any questions on the benefit area.
Anybody have any questions?
To value, is it a crystal ball? Is it a?
We, it, it's really not about how many people are gonna move for us, it's everybody is moving.
Got it.
Because value is the base.
Thank you.
And if somebody wants something different, they buy up to it.
Thank you.
And they pay the difference.
Got it.
Question on Social Security. We show employee increase, now thirteen more people for kindergarten, yet the Social Security doesn't seem to be going up or doesn't reflect a raise that was part of their contracts. I would think they would see like a two point five percent increase in Social Security spend. Everything else goes up two point five percent, that would go up two point five.
The simplest way I can tell you is this current year, twelve thirteen's budget, is probably two and a half to three percent higher than we're gonna need. So it's already factored in. What I've done is factored out people who retired, factored in people who are currently here, and tried to project those salaries at the seven point six five percent.
Thank you.
So we're a little bit over this year, so that helps us going to thirteen fourteen.
Any other questions? Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Jim. Moving on to the budget, revenue, and tax rates.
So on page twenty, you have the projected budget for, on March twenty-seventh, a hundred and forty-eight million, nine ninety-seven, one seventy-five. And tonight, we went through the BOCES, the benefits, and the salaries, those blue numbers. On our March seventh meeting, we went through all of the numbers that were in, in black with the board. From the seventh to the twenty-seventh, you'll see that the budget dropped about five thousand dollars. Now sitting at one forty-eight point nine million, a three point seven eight percent increase. On the revenue side, you have a revenue page twenty-one, and the revenue's now balanced. I'll point out, actually, you have that page, there are some increases, and I'm gonna go through them individually. You have slides starting with page twenty-two, and the first one is sales tax, and you'll see in a two hundred thousand dollar increase in sales tax for thirteen fourteen. Just footnote that that's based on per student allocations that we really don't find out about until next year, so we kind of guess in what that increase might be. The last few years, we've been going up two hundred thousand dollars and seeing that we're able to receive that in sales tax revenue. But I also caution the board that if you remember the payback from the county, the five-year payback, this will be the fourth year coming up, so we'll have one more year after that. And then the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is here in the sales tax line will be going away. So as we think about fourteen, fifteen, and will that sales tax line really increase or should it, because the following year, we're gonna have a big decrease, we'll have to look at that and, and maybe make some adjustments so that we don't have a hit of six hundred and fifty thousand all in one year, and we may be able to factor that in over two years. In the area of state aid, Superintendent Brevard talked briefly at the start, we do have a new state budget. It was sent to us this morning. It's in the process of being approved by the Assembly still. They've assured us that the numbers that they're giving us are the numbers that will be approved. We'll be doing an analysis of those numbers, and on April eighteenth, when the board meets to adopt the budget, we'll share new numbers with the board at that time. We did see an increase in the amount of, of the gap adjustment that we've had, where it lowered, it lowered the, the gap, which means we got more money, about five hundred thousand dollars. We also seen a drop in our BOCES aid estimate of about two hundred and eighty, so we're looking at about somewhere around two to three hundred thousand dollars that we have to really do an analysis of to see whether those, how those numbers fare out. So we'll be coming back in April to update the board. In the area of, in lieu of taxes, right now, we're projecting an increase of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Cometa and Pilot programs. Those are taxes that we bill individually. And they're not on the tax roll, they're usually, these plans come with a five- or ten-year reduction in assessed value, and it goes up each year by either five or ten percent. Right now, we're projecting nine hundred thousand dollars as the total revenue in that area. All other revenues, no changes in any of the other estimates for things like the interest, the rental of property, and all the miscellaneous revenues that are there. The next two lines are, are reserve lines, and are transfer from the ERS reserve and transfer from the Unemployment Reserve. The Unemployment Reserve, as I spoke when we had the budget side, we budgeted a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. On the revenue side, that's what we're budgeting to transfer into the, into, to pay those costs at a hundred and sixty-five, and that is down by a hundred and thirty-five thousand. On the employee retirement side, there's been an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the revenue line, and it's now sitting at one million, five hundred thousand dollars, which will be coming in to offset those costs on the expense side. Those are the total revenues right now. Our property tax levy is currently at ninety-one million, six hundred and ninety thousand, three point five nine percent, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that in a few minutes as we look at the property tax cap numbers. Page twenty-five, you'll see the use of our reserves in the five-year plan that the district has put in place, starting in two thousand and eleven, twelve. In two thousand and eleven, twelve, we used one point four million dollars of the thirteen million nine that we earmarked to be used to offset expenses. In twelve thirteen, we're using one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In thirteen fourteen, this current year budget, we're estimating two million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's made up of the Unemployment Reserve, the ERS Reserve, and a million dollars coming from Reserve to go into the appropriated fund balance. Now, should we have enough money in the appropriated fund balance where we don't need that? That money will move down into the years fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and it will just give, it'll just extend, be, be able to extend the use of this five-year plan out a sixth or seventh year to set us up for gradually reducing our appropriated fund balance without harming program or making major cuts. So that blue number is, is an estimate at this time, and we'll know better when we get to the end of June, when we know what our final revenues and, and expenses are. So as I was, speaking of the appropriated fund balance, five million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It's part of our multi-year plan that I just went through, the million dollars. Right now is what we're holding to be able to use for that reserve should we need it. And it is part of our five-year plan. Page twenty-seven, you'll see a tax cap formula calculation. It's the, hopefully the layman's, in layman's terms, you, you have a very concise, small, not a, not the elaborate calculation of the eight-step formula that the state makes us go through. But some of the things that are very important when we, when we look at the tax cap is we have to start with last year's levy, and that number can then be increased by what's called the tax-based growth factor. And that's given to us by New York State Property Tax. And that number for Webster right this year is point seven four, which means point seven four of the eighty-eight million, we, our first step is to be able to add that to that levy, and that amount is six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We then make some adjustments for pilots receivable for both twelve thirteen and thirteen fourteen, as well as our capital tax levy for each of those years. And then we're able to increase the total number by two percent, and that would be roughly the eighty-nine thousand, two hundred, up by two percent, which then gives us an, a number that, to that, we're able to add the last step, which is the tax levy adjustment for pensions. And the way the law reads is any increase in, in a pension beyond two percent, that you are able to add that to your tax cap levy. In this case, it's the teachers' retirement system, as I spoke earlier, it increases about four point two percent. That four point two percent, only two point four, one percent of it, it's actually four point four one percent. And when we take away the first two percent that can't be, the balance of two point four one percent, or a million four, can be added to our levy. And when you add that to our levy, our tax cap limit plus exclusions becomes a number of ninety-two million, three sixty-six, five eighty-three, or four point three six percent. Today, in this revenue picture and budget, our proposed tax levy is at three point five nine percent, or ninety-one point six nine million. So when we think about our property tax levy increasing three point five nine percent, what does that mean for tax rates? When we figure the tax rates, we need to factor in not only our assessment growth, also our equalization rates of all towns, and assessment value, meaning property values. We need to know what that final budget is, and when you make all those calculations, with a three point five nine property tax levy, the property tax rate, that's really what the homeowner is gonna pay, will be estimated right now at two point six seven percent. That factors in what assessment growth we might see in all of our towns. And on page twenty-nine, you'll see the estimated tax rates for each of the four towns as of today.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Do we have any questions? Lisa?
First of all, thank you for putting levy and rate on the same page and putting them equal, because I think that's always caused some confusion on part of our, our community. But when you said the governor's proposal, the Assembly has to approve it, what's our best read on when they're coming back, that they might approve it, and what do you think the likelihood is that they're gonna approve it? What's our best read on that, Assembly approval?
I believe the Assembly's gonna approve it.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and, and what we receive today is gonna be our final numbers. Only because we've received so much information from so many different agencies, my guess is they said they were gonna approve it and, and send out the numbers.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions? No? Okay. Moving along. Jim, you're still on buses.
Bus purchases, recommended bus purchase for thirteen fourteen. Each year, we have a proposition on the ballot to replace school buses. We have a hundred and seven full-size buses on regular routes, probably about twenty-five spares in our fleet, and each year, we try to replace about ten of those. And the buses that we're currently replacing are anywhere from eleven to twelve years old, or will be in, in September. Our mini-buses, there are over forty-one of them en route. We have about five spares that we use, and, and those spares are used when we have to bring a bus in to do maintenance on it. So we continue with our normal routes. So these buses, and we're talking about replacing three of those this year, and they're, those buses that'll be coming out of, out of service will be eleven to twelve years old as well. The new buses that we'll be looking to buy, ten sixty-five passenger Thomas buses, at a cost estimate of a hundred and eight thousand, eight eighty-four, which totals just over one million, eighty-eight thousand dollars. Three twenty-nine passenger Collins mini-buses, estimated cost forty-five thousand, oh forty-one, a hundred and thirty-five, five thousand, one twenty-three. We finance these over a five-year period, so with financing costs and attorney's fees, about thirty-six thousand dollars. So in total, Proposition One for new school buses will be one million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We will be selling the buses that we take out of service, and we'll be receiving revenue for those, and the amount of money that we'll get has not been determined, as we won't put those up for sale until summertime. How do we finance these buses? The total cost of one million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, will we finance these over five years? So, and that's, the annual cost is estimated at two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. These buses are eligible for state aid, and our state aid ratio is seventy percent. So seventy percent of the two hundred and fifty-two thousand each year will be receiving aid from the state. So the annual cost, the net cost for these buses is seventy-five thousand, six hundred, plus the interest, or about five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars per bus for the five years. It will be Proposition One, as long as the board is in support of that.
We don't need to vote on that tonight, do we?
We don't need to vote on, um, we don't need to vote on, not an official vote, is, as long as you support the recommendation, that's what will be, if, if, on, on the eighteenth, if you decide that you think you want to change something on this, then we'll change the legal notice to reflect that.
Okay. So you need something by the eighteenth, not tonight?
We're gonna approve the, yes, we'll approve the budget on the eighteenth, and if you approve the budget, it'll be the approval of the proposition as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the buses?
One quick question. Buses, because it's a separate proposition, are not part of the two percent, the traditional budget. If somebody folded it in their traditional budget and didn't put it in, it's a separate proposition, it would fall into the two percent camp, would it not?
The way, the way this works, we have a five-year plan, and one year will be coming out, the next year goes in. So within our debt service budget is what it would cost to buy these buses if they're approved.
Okay.
If they're not approved, we won't spend that money.
I do want to make a.
But we have to.
When we talked about the decisions that we've made over the past three years to kind of rein in our budget and get it in line going forward, one of the things that Jim analyzed was, we have been always on a ten-year replacement cycle, could we extend that a few years? And we, we have been doing that in the last couple, last two to three years, we've been extending that, that budget, that bus replacement cycle. So when you really think about it, and you think about that five thousand dollar cost to the budget for five years each year per bus, it's, it's quite amazing that it can be financed that way, and really keep our students safe to and from school, and be a conservative part of the budget each and every year. So it is, sometimes I get questions on that, why are we voting on buses every year? And I think it's important to note that we do that because we do want to have those costs be consistent and predictable, and as conservative as possible, so there's not big increases for a large purchase of buses and decreases, but it's just kind of a predictable part of the budget, and it, and it just supports that replacement cycle, that smart replacement cycle. And I think one of the, the impacts too has been, when you heard the departments present last workshop, that we've really been aggressive about a maintenance program, which has really helped us extend the lifecycle of our buses. So just reminding you and the community about the measures we've taken over the last several years to get that predictable, conservative budget. several years, to get that predictable, conservative budget proposal again to the community for the long-term benefit of the students.
Do we have any questions on the buses? How about any overall questions or discussions that we might wanna have at this time?
Good.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for the hard work of putting it together.
Yeah, I was, that's what I was gonna say. Before we close, I'd like to thank you all, the staff, for all the time and effort you put into this budget. I do appreciate it.
I do wanna thank Jim, because you can see how much Jim talked this evening, how much work he had to do for this, for this presentation. This is really all about Jim tonight. So, thank you, Jim, for your hard work to put it together.
So is the budget. So, for, further budget discussions, we are going to, we've had a workshop to our calendar for Monday, April eighth, for further discussions, just to process the new state numbers, and they'll be voted on by then, and we'll can, process that, so that on Thursday, April eighteenth, we can adopt the budget, you know, we'll know ahead of time.
This is the third year in a row we actually have a budget prior to going to the vote, which is amazing.
Yes, yes. Yes, it is amazing.
Seventeen-year gap, but we didn't.
Great.
That is true.
Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second?
I, I don't know, it was either Mike or Janine and Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, and have an enjoyable Easter.